We are taking this morning's meeting session, so I ask for someone to move off to exit. I think that was lucky. Okay, are you moving us out? I don't know. Uh, thank you all, thank you for your patience at seven oh three, we are moving back into um board meeting for Monday, October seventh. Uh, it is time for item one point three, special leaders, there's five and four two plus. Um, in my allegiance to the correct, the United States of America, it is the republic for which stands our nation, our God, our people, our liberty and justice for all. Um. Right now is the opportunity for the good of the board and the board to discuss things that have been going on in the district for the past month since school has begun. But I would like to share the joys of um cotton candy and popcorn and homecoming, not nothing, or anything else.
I'll say, um, our, our new lights. It went, our new lights had their first test on Friday night at homecoming and for the most part, they performed very well, so thank you Frank for making that happen.
They, they worked today, they ran them, they put stabilizer in and they ran for three hours with a full load, so hopefully we'll be done.
And all of them, it was a really great night. There were a ton of people there, so many groups represented.
I um, I did overhear some of our visiting um teen families, um just commenting like such a wonderful community space and you know, just like to see everybody out and having fun, which really.
Nice, nice compliment from.
From our foes.
Your sporting foes.
Can I add one thing just with that? Um, we did have a generator issue and a couple of community members meeting one of them, they got their generator, but also Ryan Smith like went and I just wanted to give a little shout out because he went and got his other generator and brought it, so you know, thank you to him for, for the meeting for stepping up and bringing them because the ones that we just bought weren't working, so appreciate that.
Fantastic, it was fantastic to be there. Um, with that, we can move to item two point one, the opportunity for the public to be heard. Again, if there's any member of the public who's here who'd like to join us, there's Paul Ian, and we invite you to. Okay, alright, we will move into our first report slash presentation, which um is Bonadillo and come on now.
Are you doing statements, anyone wants hard copies?
Does anybody want any hard copies?
I, I think I'd like that it's like time, is that available for me or will it be?
I bought five copies.
No, I mean, is it like?
It's, it's on our copy.
Okay, so the whole will be.
Hello, my name is Teresa Ellis, I'm the external auditor from Bonadillo Group and I was the audit supervisor of this engagement. We recently completed the audit and I'm here today to go over the report in detail with you and go over any questions that you may have. There are four deliberations that we provided to you, the first is your financial statements, the second is your audit, the extra classroom financial statements, the third is the required communications letter, and the fourth is the management letter comment. Please feel free again to stop me if you have any questions. I'm gonna first start with your required communications letter, uh there were no transactions for which there was a lack of authoritative guidance or consensus, and all significant transactions had been recognized in the proper period. The most sensitive accounting estimates reported in the financial statements were depreciable lives of capital assets, other post-employment benefits, uh OPEB liability, compensated offices, and net pension assets liabilities and related deferred inflows and outflows of resources. These estimates are applied to the government-wide financial statements only, and our role as your auditor is to evaluate the estimates and all estimates were evaluated and considered reasonable. There were no significant, significant difficulties in performing the audit or dealing with management, there were no disagreements with management, and in terms of management consulting with other accountants, we noted that the district did not consult with any other accounting firms. Our discussion with management were in the normal course of our professional relationship and our responses were not of a condition of retention. Uh, I'm gonna go over the district financial statements at a higher level, if you're looking at the financial statements, there are seven sections, the independent auditors' report, the management's discussion and analysis, the financial statements, the required supplementary information, supplementary information, and other sup, other information, and required reports under the government auditing standards. Um, so starting off on your last page, page sixty-four, is your scheduled findings and responses, that's a good summary of the results. We are issuing an unmodified opinion that the financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with GAAP, generally accepted accounting principles, upon the board's acceptance. This is the highest level of assurance that we can give you. We did not identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal controls or the school district's reporting, financial reporting. Uh, there were no compliance findings to report on. So bring you back to page one of the financial statements where the independent audit report is, and just briefly go over our responsibilities. Uh, the opinion, we are issuing again, an unmodified opinion, that the financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with GAAP, again, upon your acceptance. This is again, the highest level we can give. Uh, management's responsibility is for the preparation and fair presentation of these financial statements in accordance with the accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. Auditor's responsibility, uh what we are responsible for is to express these opinions on the financial statements based on our audit. An audit involves performing procedures to obtain audit evidence about the amounts and disclosures in the financial statements, and we perform transaction testing over your internal controls as well as your transaction testings, uh substantively over your accounts receivables, you know, accounts payable, cash, debt, et cetera. Uh, pages four through thirteen are your M D N A, which stands for management's discussion analysis, I won't go over this in detail, but this is a great spot if you kinda wanted to get a synopsis of the audit report without going through all sixty-four pages. Uh, some financial highlights I wanna go over, as far as an overview of your financial statements, there are two sets of financial statements, your school district-wide financial statement and then your fund-level uh statements. They both present two entirely different pictures, the school district, uh school district-wide statements are on a full cruel basis, while your fund level is on a cruel base, uh modified a cruel basis. School district-wide financial statements, starting on page fourteen, you have a net position deficit as of June thirty, thirtieth, twenty twenty-four of sixty-four million. Uh, what is a primary, you know, reason for this is really it's the OPEB post-employment benefit liability, approximately eighty million. Uh, the school district's wide financial statements activities, uh statement of activities on page fifteen, that shows the change in that position, and that decreased approximately two million from fiscal year uh twenty twenty-four. Some highlights that contributed to that, uh in OPEB, OPEB expense of two point seven million was recognized, there was nine hundred fifty-three thousand of pension expense recognized, uh three million of capital assets capitalized, one point two million depreciated in amortized of those capital assets, approximately six hundred seventy-eight thousand of debt repaid and a new issuance of four hundred twenty-two thousand for losses. Uh, the fund-level financial statements, starting on page sixteen, your general fund ended the year with nine point two million. Six point seven million of the restricted fund balance related to various reserves, approximately one point one million under assigned, which includes your encumbrance, and eight hundred and sixty-two thousand fifty-nine dollars appropriated for subsequent years expenditures. One point three eight million of unassigned fund balance, you are limited to retaining a four percent of the school district's budget in unreserved, unappropriate fund balance, and the district remain under that four percent limitation. Capital projects fund had a deficit of six hundred sixty-seven thousand approximately, this will be eliminated in the future as transfers are made from the general fund to the capital, from the general fund's capital reserve. Uh, capital projects fund, some key things to take from here is three million of capital outlays this year, and then again, the school issued four hundred twenty-two thousand in bonds. Uh, your non-major funds, uh include your federal fund, school lunch fund, debt service fund, and miscellaneous special revenue fund, um those are on pages fifty-seven and fifty-eight of your statements. Um, just a high-level review of those, special aid fund, your fund balance is zero due to the nature of the fund, school lunch fund balance, hundred and sixty-two thousand, debt service fund balance, three hundred and twenty thousand, miscellaneous special revenue of two hundred and one thousand. Uh, the fund-level statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in your fund balance for your governmental funds, I will go into more detail about general fund later, but again, your non-major funds, special aid, you spent seven hundred four thousand expenditures, school lunch expenditure, expenditures exceeded your revenues by thirty-six thousand. Debt service fund is made up of cash equivalents and uh interest earned, and miscellaneous special run, special revenue fund, revenues exceeded your expenditures by approximately twenty thousand, this relates to your scholarships and extra classroom activities. Your notes to your financial statements begin on page twenty-two and go to fifty-one, I will not go through in details. Um, next I'm gonna go over the budget to actual schedule relating to your general fund on page fifty-two and fifty-three. Your revenues, uh thirty million, four hundred eighty-six thousand, nine hundred eleven of actual revenues, uh compared to your twenty-nine million, four hundred five thousand, four seventy-seven budgeted revenues, which created one million, eighty-one thousand, four hundred thirty-four savings, or sorry, over budget. Uh, your expenditures, twenty-nine million, nine seventy-seven, three ninety of actual expenditures compared to thirty-one million, six twenty-nine, one ninety-nine budgeted, um including within that budget, in the savings, it's two hundred fifty-nine thousand of encumbrances. This brings you to a net favorable result of one point three million, and your fund balance grew in general fund by five hundred nine thousand. Uh, following these reports, we'll have the pensions and OPEB schedules that are all unaudited, which I will skip over. Um, page fifty-seven and fifty-eight, again, is your non-major funds that are in detail, page fifty-nine shows the calculation of the fund balance, four percent limitation, and page sixty shows all the capital projects. Lastly, your required communication, uh required report under government auditing standards report, pages sixty-two to sixty-three, this report requires us to gain an understanding and report on your internal controls over your financial reporting. We noted no material weakness or significant deficiencies in the financial reporting over controls. The second part of that report is on compliance and laws, regulations, and grant contracts, that non-compliance could lead to a material effect on the financial statements. We noted no instance of non-compliance materials to the financial statements was reported. Um, your extra classroom report, we issued the school district's annual audit of the extra classroom activities, uh we issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. So your, just quick uh recap, the total fund balance was hundred and thirty-four thousand, five thirty as of June thirtieth, compared to last year's hundred and sixteen thousand. I'd like to thank James Sutherland and Kristy Rindberg in the business office for everything in the audit to keep us going, uh if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Our former and current audit chair, committee chairs are.
Over there, okay.
So, I have just heard.
So, thank you Teresa, I think that's the best audit report that we proceed at, I've been on the board, like very comprehensive, very complete, so thank you for that. Um, question about school lunch fund, we're consistently running at a deficit, which I think is common among schools like us that have fairly high, um, we're, we're not a high poverty district. Um, are you seeing, is my understanding of that correct, first of all, that we're gonna continue around at a deficit, and are there other strategies that you're seeing other districts employ to try and mitigate some of those losses?
Um, speaking very high level, I have seen a lot of schools become C E P waivered this year, which I'm not sure how this school, but compared to other schools, there are the losses, especially with the increase in losses, but I don't want to speak too much on that, really. I believe you guys subsidized your general fund to the school lunch fund to help with that deficit, and that kinda comes back to budgeting with that.
We don't qualify it with our rates to be able to get to see if you guys.
Yeah, we've been subsidizing, I think our plan was to continue to subsidize, um, okay, thank you. It's a good job.
Any other questions or?
Thank you, that was fantastic, I appreciate it.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you. I would like to just thank Jim and the business office for so much, still, on the report, who takes their cooperation and their ability to do this.
Absolutely. Well, with that, we move to our next presentation, which is um going down electronically, it is also an electronic hall pass.
Yes, so. So I'm going to um present something very quickly here, but just kinda go over um expectations. Uh, last year, we initiated small presentations, um anywhere between five and ten minutes from a wide variety of groups throughout the district monthly. Um, since we just started, let's be honest, no one had the time to go on and do that at the moment, so um, you know, there's a lot going on, and a lot of people are really pushing hard to be able to just start and open the school year. Um, one thing that did come up, and I know people have asked about it, is the e-hall pass, so um Mrs. Cardillo, who could not be here tonight, and Mrs. Goodwin, Joe, could you push that towards us, that one is right there? Yeah, just push it actually, so the rest of us can see it. Awesome, thank you. Um, they put together a basic, this um video, so everybody can be able to see. Kind of e-hall pass, learn about e-hall pass. So I'm going to play their video for you, and there's a couple of staff items on it too. Um, before we begin, I just wanna thank the following people, Mrs. Cardillo, uh Mrs. Goodwin, Mr. Tursky, Michael Horan, Mr. Foley, Mrs. Casado, Mr. Karen, and Miss Folt. Um, all of them had a part in, in doing this, Michael Horan actually put together the whole video, so he's one of our students here, so he really, Mrs. Cardillo said that we wanted to put a video together, and Mr. Tursky and, and Michael worked together and they put it, so just wanna kinda give a shout out to them as well for all their participation support.
So we are one month in of using the e-hall passes from here at the high school, and we wanted to give you an update as to how it's going and what it's being used for. So the e-hall pass is a digital hall pass that allows students to request a pass from a teacher, and helps us as administration um to manage the hall pass requests. Students can use this from their own device, um or their school issued device, so some students have put the app on their phone, that's not required, but some of the features that we're using is pass limit, so certain students have pass limits, so they're not out of the classroom more than a certain number of times each day. Um, locations can have pass limits, so there's only a certain number of students that can sign out to each one of those passes, and a teacher can set pass limit so that too many students don't leave their classroom at one time. Um, we do destination checks, so hall monitors or the security monitor can check a pass in real time to see if the student does have a pass, if they're actually headed to that direction. Uh, contact check, so if students cannot be out of the classroom at the same time, the system can block both students from having a pass at one time, it just simply shows that the hallway is occupied at that time, um so then they know when it's clear they're free to go. Uh, pass approval, teachers can approve or deny the passes quickly without disrupting their lesson, so their teachers are also setting up auto passes that allows students to leave without a teacher needing to say anything, but okay. Um, as administrators, we can generate custom reports on pass grant takers, pass granchos, students coming out at the same time, and there's a few others that we're looking at in terms of how much time students are spending out of class, things like that. And then pass type, so students can create different types of passes, such as teacher passes for bathroom breaks and appointment passes for scheduled meetings. So this just shows the e-hall pass from the student's perspective, on the left, it has what it would look like when a student goes to start a pass, it shows where they're going to and where they're coming from, and then this green screen will pop up on their device showing that they have a pass, so if I was a teacher and I walk around, I can see that student's been out for twenty-four seconds and where they're headed. From the staff's perspective, there's two different types of passes, uh is an appointment pass, so guidance, if they wanted to set up an appointment for a student to come in, they can set this up for a specific date and time and from what class. And they can also just create a pass in the moment, so if a student said, you know, I need to go to the nurse, they can start a pass for that person, where they're going, and the reason for that visit. This is what the dashboard looks like, so as soon as the student is out into the class, out of the classroom, they pop up on this dashboard, uh any staff member can see where that kid is supposed to be, where they're coming from, and then there's also a kiosk version. So for a kiosk, if we're in a location such as uh the cafeteria or the gym, where they might not have a device available, um a teacher can start a kiosk, and that allows students to check in and out of that location without needing a device. So just some general statistics, so for the month of September, there were a total of six thousand six hundred and fifty-one passes, um students used the bathrooms, the ladders, going to the Jabahut, the main office, and guidance. So the following few minutes are just gonna be some teacher um testimonials, staff testimonials as to what they're using the e-hall pass system for.
We've been using e-hall pass for about a month now, and I gotta say, I really like it, one of the big things I like about it is that it holds students accountable for where they're going. So the way I use it is students can make their own passes and I just have to approve if they go, now, if I automatically prove it, all I have to do is say, yeah, you can go. But the nice thing about it is that the student is saying where they're gonna go, so if they decide to deviate from that and they're gone for longer than they should be, I can have a conversation with them and say, listen, you filled out this pass, and you said you were going somewhere, and you didn't go in there. And it's really taken a lot of the stress off of, should I send a kid somewhere, should I not, and ultimately, I think it's, it's working really, really well, it's making sure that kids are staying in classrooms, which I think is the most important thing for them, but if they do need to go somewhere, we can at least know where they're going, and I think it makes the communication between teachers a little bit better too, if we're using it.
E-pass allows me to see who's supposed to be in the hallways, how long they've been in the hallways, where they're supposed to be going, and more importantly, what class they're supposed to be in.
Any questions? Yes. Let's see, there you are, and you are headed to, expect times. And you forgot something there? Right? Forgot, well. You are on your way, my friend.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, having e-hall pass has allowed me to keep students accountable, it also lets me know where they're going, and I can talk to them a little bit about why they're out in the hall.
So I'm Jeff Folt, I'm Spanish teacher in the high school and middle school, um I have noticed that using the hall, e-hall pass, I have seen less kids wandering in hallways, and when I am approaching a student in the hall, and they tell me where they're supposed to be or where they're going, I can come back and verify it, but that story is true, um and I feel like it's very helpful with safety in the building.
So, I was a little surprised, I actually, by the way, I didn't watch it until this now, so six thousand passes is maybe a lot of passes to go, um, a couple of things that I witnessed just in general, um and which I had, so the contact checks, when I was a principal, I wish I had that. Um, that is unbelievably useful, um from an administrative perspective, that I tell you, a hundred things that I could have done differently if I had that back in the day. Joe, and Mrs. Green, go kind of actually, I'd like to hear your perspective, but from the student perspective, you're only one student, but what do you think of it now? Cause you said last time wasn't really working, people kinda weren't doing it fully.
Um, I think it's working a lot better, a lot of people have figured out, like all the entrances are there, and like, um, it's definitely a lot smoother now.
Do you put on your phone?
I do.
So that is, and one of the other components of that is, when Joe came to my office today to talk about the meeting, I don't have access to it still, which I probably should, so I couldn't give him a pass back, but he was still there, so.
Can we get stats on how we compare? Like, there should be like a passes per, like, student ratio somewhere?
No.
I'm just, I'm just, it's just pure curiosity.
It is, but at the same time, I think it's pretty invasive, and I'm curious also to like when kids are going to the bathroom, that their time in the bathroom is being tracked, and I can only imagine that increases anxiety for kids who are already not filled up going to the bathroom at school. So not to go to potty humor or anything, but just saying that that's a really odd thing to start saying, hold this kid's in the bathroom for two minutes and seventy, forty-two seconds.
I don't think they use it like that, so when I was a high school principal, and again, I've been out of the schools for a while, but I will tell you, teachers will write passes, and what I would get is, I would get a referral for a student who went to the bathroom and was gone for twenty minutes. Like, those are the referrals to have, so this is actually data that it can show, where you were in half the conversation with a student, or were you for twenty minutes, I was in the bathroom, people, okay, great, or we can find out that they actually weren't in the bathroom and they were kinda wandering around the buildings, cause believe it or not, kids will write passes and not know where they're supposed to, and this is an opportunity to kinda help organize it. I know one of the things in the district, and this is why it was brought up, was that there was a sense from staff members that it was kind of a free-for-all for students in the hallway, and there was a thing, you know, not a concern of where students were and are missing too much time, so this is just one little way to add a little structure to it, that I believe the staff members are finding very useful, because it's limiting the amount of time that kids are not in, out of the room, and actually spending time on task.
I think the one bit of data that I'm curious about is how it was affect um income at Jabahut? Because I think kids wandering halls and stopping by Jabahut is a source of income for the lunch.
I think Lisa said that the number one place that kids go on the pass is Jabahut, Jabahut guidance, but they're getting passes not to go to it instead of wandering. I don't think Jabahut's ever gonna lose any money. Any other question that I can bring back to Mrs. Cardillo?
It's only the high school.
Yeah, it was probably only high school, so it's not the real school.
Right, if kids don't have access to their phones, I think that would be a challenge, more of a challenge for students to sound like. Crumbles.
It's like crumbles. So the security model would be like, where are you, and literally check the kids and find out where they are, so, cause kids can not tell you the truth all the time either, right, so it's the idea of it, of where they're going and how they are, and he can kinda help direct them that. So if you're supposed to be X and you're all the way over in the gym area. He knows that they're not supposed to be there, and he can just gently say, oh no, you're supposed to be in this room, let's get back. And I believe the majority, there's a lot of schools now that have all switched to this, this structure for their passes, um more so than not, now I think it's a majority.
Do you need to do a report?
So, last week, uh, last weekend, um we had a spirit week at Pepper Valley that led to homecoming. So, last week, and this weekend, we had the spirit week at Pepper Valley that led to homecoming, and the spirit week, I think, went really, really well, there was a lot of kids participating, and not just like a little bit participating, but like every single day, like I saw a lot of students every day participating, which just makes it more fun as an environment in school. Um, I also liked that the teachers participate, it just makes it more more relatable for the kids, so the teachers, and helps them feel more comfortable as incoming students and even like older students that have been here for a while. Um, uh, Pepper Valley was really enjoyed by a lot of students, I know a lot of people really enjoyed seeing the Wizards player, the, actually, the seventh professional uh basketball player. Um, and he was just really energetic, he got a lot of people pumped up and ready for the rest of the Pepper Valley, which absolutely went smoothly, and both of those, the spirit weekend, Pepper Valley, really hyped up the homecoming games, there was a lot of people, the whole community was there, and showed really well, the dance had a great turnout, the games had a great turnout, a lot of the um organization and club, for the schools, or clubs and organizations had tents at the homecoming games, were like um merchandise and um food items, and a lot of them had a great turnout with that.
Thanks, Rick, please. How was your retreat, John? How was the senior retreat?
Oh, that was fun too, yeah, um, we had the senior retreat that was a two-hour long trip that we just did volunteer service in places about either, either right here or just down the road. And that was a good way to get seniors, um, started on their fifty hours, and also just.
and also just a good way to, so on a Friday, hang out with some friends while getting some good work done. And we had a nice lunch at Patrick Barque after we got there.
Only two superintendents, please.
So, I just wanna kind of echo, I wanna echo Kathy said about the business office and Christie and Rob and Murch and Lori and everyone who was involved in the audit. I also wanna give a shout out to Jim. Unfortunately, Jim is not here. He is currently under the weather, but we're hoping for a speedy recovery and having him back into the district. But he did a great job putting all this together, so, kind of, that. Moving on. So I'd like to give another shout out to Kristen Heidi and Claire Marcus. They partnered with the library on the book study that they did, that was the Ancient Generation book study. But I wanna give a shout out to the staff members, because they were here in this room. There were roughly sixty people that came to the event, and that's a lot of people to an event. And they did an amazing job going through the study, having a real positive discourse with people, allowing people to, you know, kind of voice their opinions in a safe environment. So I just, you know, hats off to Kristen and Claire. I told them, at this point, if they were to ever do anything else, they're gonna have a hundred people here, because it was so well-attended. And I really felt like people really respected everything that they were doing and the environment they created. So it was just really nice to see. You know, as a parent, I really appreciated all the conversations. So, capital project. Let's talk a little bit about what's going on, if you saw it back there. So, the transportation facility is moving forward, the fence is up, the foundation is getting poured. So, that's the foundation for the transportation facility is getting poured. And on Wednesday, we're looking at the panels coming in for the building. It's three tractor-trailer loads of panels that will be here. Now, that doesn't mean that they're gonna be put up. So what happens next is, after that gets done, the foundation gets done, the steel goes up. The steel should be up in November. Then we can lay out the panels and everything else, and the panels that go up in December. So it's gonna be some cold work, but they're gonna be getting it done. You're gonna see some painting happening, we're trying to schedule out how some of the painting can occur. Not all the painting can be done, but after it's done, then we can put the panels out and kind of get the work done. We're really still on schedule for this to be done in May, and we're still looking forward with the project that we're in. So, again, it's a prefab building, that's getting done, so, you know, schedule up a little bit quicker, but work is occurring. The EPC, so that's the Energy Performance Contract that got out. That has been approved by the state, finally, positive. And we had our kickoff meeting last week about all of the things that we're doing with it. So the first thing that's getting done with the EPC, what we asked for was the pool. We've got multiple complaints over the years about the lighting of the pool, how dim it is, how it's hard to see. So they are fast-tracking that, we're hoping to have the pool done, but it's kind of a black hole. We had a very unofficial official meeting, yeah.
Like, in like three, four weeks.
Yeah, so they've ordered everything, they're getting it done, so they're hoping one day, the company who is currently doing it is out of Buffalo, but they're at another school district, they're gonna take a day off from that school district to come here, because I really require, like, we need that done sooner than later, so that pool, I mean, if you've been here for a while and you've had kids swim, that pool has been complaining about for years on the lighting, and it's very dangerous to change out the lights in there, because you have to go right up to the very edge of the pool to do it. So, it's retrofitted, and they're gonna take care of that, so, in October. Then, and we're looking probably March or May for the rest of the building to get accomplished and done, with the EPC and then some other stuff getting finished. The good thing, which could end up being a bad thing since I say it publicly, is that we thought the central, the central air system, the desert air system for the pool, was supposed to be fifty to sixty weeks out. They are now saying possibly thirty. So, if everything goes, knock on plastic, if everything goes as planned, we'll have the desert air system in July. We'll only have to close the pool off July and August, and we should be able to have the pool back up and running by September. That was not what our original plan was, and what we thought, so that's actually really positive. But again, we're just in the ordering phases and getting everything done with the schedule. So, real positive news with the EPC coming forward, we're still, with the elementary school, we're still coming together with getting that bid ready, so there's a lot of documents that have to get prepared and put out now, to get the bed out by the, October, November. So, we're trying, just a lot of pieces of planning that still have to be finalized and to go along with it. Any questions on capital projects? Okay. The last thing that I wanted to talk about was just transportation. And I know this can be one of the most frustrating things in the world, is about trying to get kids out and everybody doing what they have to do for transportation. I will say that our, our transportation department is doing the very best that they can. If you looked at other school districts and other places around the state and capital region, nobody is fully loaded with transportation. Everybody is struggling with getting our students to where they need to be. And we're doing a pretty good job, knock on plastic, again. You know, our runs, we're not delaying our runs in the morning, we're giving kids where they need to be during the school day. You know, we have runs, we have our morning and afternoon runs for the kids to come to district, but we also have our midday runs with our students going to VOTACs and different programs and VOCs, and we also have our students at placement. So, they're going all these other places as well. So we have a lot of things happening all at once. Add on top of that, the extracurricular and activities that go on, trying to get all of those people back, trying to make sure we get kids out on time, and trying to find drivers. That can be very difficult, especially when you're, you know, we're having our mechanics drive, or dispatcher drive, and if we have people who are out sick, then we're, have to cut runs. So, it's not like we have the ability to do it. So they're doing a great job, but we are struggling. We have two new people on the agenda for tonight, which is great, but it takes a month for us to train, at least, in order for them to get their license. So even though we get someone on who doesn't have a license, it's another month, a month and a half of them being able to drive for us. So, we're always trying to do that. The transportation department and I are working on possibly putting together a program where we will help people get their permit. So, having our nineteen-eight person here maybe doing some sessions, because that's one thing that people say is, "Well, I'd love to get my permit, and I'll get it", and then they never get it. So giving an opportunity for them to study with our people, maybe get behind your boss and do some permit work. We're looking at partnering with a couple of other open school districts possibly, and just getting the word out there. Because the more people we get permitted, the more people that can get trained and get, you know, finally get licenses and be eligible for this. It is an issue, but we're, we're trying our best to get through it.
So, as an example, for golf this year, parents have been handling transportation, at least for boys, both, completely on their own, without the district. In part due to some of these troubles getting enough drivers, and parents being willing to do it. But if a parent wanted to get their license and essentially volunteer to show up here anyway, which they're already doing, load up a bus, and drive those kids to Orchard Creek or wherever, that is something that we could do?
Yes, so let's talk about that, it's a really good question. So, we do have parents that are driving students, so some school districts actually don't even transport their golf teams. They have completely other parents here. So, that is one that we've been actually talking about, seeing if we can do it more. We do, we have coaches interested in dragging students. They would be considered an occasional driver. So let's talk about occasional drivers, or volunteer drivers, as what you're saying. It's actually called an occasional driver under engineers, you know, I called it in a minute earlier today. But they, they call it the occasional volunteer driver, and you can actually, I actually sent the website today to Transportation. So many of that, because we had this conversation today. So, a volunteer driver has to still have some approvals through the district. They can't be paid to do so. If they're paid, they're considered a driver, right? And there's specific things. So they cannot drive a student to and from school, they cannot drive a student to program back and forth. So they would have to be like a medical component, like if somebody needed to go to the hospital, we could drive them there. That would be an occasional driver, or an extracurricular athletic event. Also cannot be what we would consider a bus driver, you need a CDL. Unless they had a CDL, that would be different. It would have to be like a suburban or car kind of car, so you have to have a license for the class. If they got a CDL, most likely, given behind the bus, we would want them to be a paid bus driver, and then, because there's a whole bunch of other things that go along. Occasional drivers are the suburban class, that's what they can get you. And that's their view of something.
Not one of those short, shorter buses?
No, it would be a short bus, it would have to be a suburban or lower.
Okay, so you can get at most like eight kids?
Correct. Yeah, we've actually, the transportation department and I kind of sat down today brainstorming some of these things.
Like sixteen, and, oh, would be like a cargo beam?
There is a number limit that.
Eight passengers?
There is a number limit that VOP is looking at, so Transportation's actually called VOP today, and has some questions out regarding how many we can have for an occasional driver. Because there's a lot of, we're not certain the exact number of occasions, but, yeah. So, yeah, absolutely, we, we want that. If anyone's interested in learning, or volunteering to learn, they can reach out to me or Transportation. But even then, it's important just to get the word out, like, we can talk about it. Someone wants to volunteer, or parents want to volunteer, we're unhappy to try to figure something out.
Yeah, because I mean, there are a lot of parents driving their kids to and from school, picking them up at the end of the day, so, if you add a few more in your vehicle, right?
Right, and an occasional driver can't do it more than, I don't wanna speak the regulations off the top of my head. There's a certain amount of times that you can do it in a month, that have to and from components of, there's limitations that a district can allow for. And then there's also contractual concerns, that we have to also make out of the contract as well. But there's a lot there, but we're definitely, we've actually had a quick long meeting today about occasional drivers, just because we know it's an issue. We're trying to figure out, brainstorming, so I'm glad you brought it up. And if there is anyone interested in any of that, they should reach out to me. And that's all we have.
With that, we'll move to item four, thank you for your question. And the minutes of the regular meeting, anyone want to discuss them or move them?
I'll move it.
Second, I'll second, on favor?
Aye.
All right, treasures report at five point one. Counting comparisons with audit, but would anyone like to discuss or move it?
I'll move it.
Second? On favor?
Aye.
All right, I moved to item five point two. Seems like we have potential to welcome a number of new people, including those two bus drivers. Should anyone like to discuss or move this?
I'll move it.
Second? I'll second, on favor?
Aye.
All right, regulations, welcome. So, we have CSC and VOC sub, CSC recommendations and VOC sublists. Let's take those ones at once, we'll present it for a moment. If there are any comments or questions on either, or anyone would like to move them?
I'll move it.
Second? I'll second, on favor?
Aye.
There's a proposed trip to Spain, I think there was some questions about that.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, my, my concern, I know we've done some of these trips in the past, and I don't recall there being a coursework component to make a student eligible to go on the trip. So I'm wondering, Frank, if you could address that.
Yeah, so in the proposal itself, the more language teachers brought up, Spanish four and EE Spanish, that's kind of like a capstone project, to say like, "This is what we're going to do", so not opening it up to the rest of the students listening. You get to this point, then we can go here for the immersion and understanding the language component. So that's kind of the idea here.
Yeah, so I mean, we, we've done some trips to, where have we gone, like Italy, Greece, Spain in the past? And even when they've been opened up to large numbers of students, I think we've only gotten, not, not large numbers. So a little concerned, one, that if we limited, limit the eligibility to only students who've taken those courses, we may end up with, I don't know, only a few students, and then I think we've got to question whether it's, you know, there's too, the overhead costs are too high per student. And I don't know if the district is funding any of this, but I think certainly, you know, if you're chartering a plan or paying for classes while you're in Spain, or, you know, like, those costs have to get spread out over the number of people participating. So I think that would be a concern. And then, you know, somewhat selfishly, I guess, because I have two students in the high school and neither would be eligible. You know, I would, I would prefer if this is a district-sponsored type trip, that it be opened up to more students. I, I get the language component being of, an aspect of it, and I think that, I do think that's valuable. But there's a whole lot of other experiences that kids on the trip will benefit from, that are not necessarily language-based.
So at that point, all kids will have been, had at least a couple of years to Spanish.
I think so, it is, yeah, I think so. But, yeah, so, are there other questions?
I will say, it's not uncommon for trips like these to only be available to students in the upper levels of a language. And oftentimes, it's seen as an incentive to keep students in the program. Because otherwise, you're looking at incredibly small numbers in eleventh to twelfth grade, and then you're in danger of the program being cut. So I'm not saying this is the only reason, but that's often why schools will be fit to students who have reached that level, in hopes of retaining students.
And Frank, in the proposal, I didn't see any potential costs? Do they have, do they have to wait till they get the numbers?
Yeah, so the potential cost is, it's student by student. I think it's important, I wanna just kind of hash back before I talk about the cost a little, is, you mentioned the other trips that we do. So this would be the first trip that the district sponsored and district oversight, which I know, and unfortunately, this is a time constraint, right? Because we talked a little bit about last year, when I was tabled, and so the principal came in and we brought the curriculum committee. And so there's not enough, there's really not a ton of time to kind of vet through any changes in anything. This would be district-sponsored event. The other ones are through EF tours, which really are not district-sponsored. So they happen outside of the timeframe of the school. It was Ken Young, yes. I think someone else is taking it over, I don't remember exactly. I think maybe Scott P. don't open that. Yeah, I think that's right. So this is the first district one with district oversight and district sponsoring it. So I just, I think that's important to kind of clarify the two of them. Very similar though, both are funded by the parents. So they're all funded by the, by the community. The only difference is that this one would have a chaperone component to it. You know, so after, you know, the person who goes would get payment from, they would get the, the trip for free. They wouldn't have to pay for the trip. But then after that, you know, whatever cost would go out, we would have to pay chaperone pay. So that would probably be the extent of the different pay that would go into it, was whatever based off of that chaperone.
If we have chaperones, we have a current kind of policy on volunteers, volunteers and volunteers. So how would, we do it here, volunteer, you have to, at certain levels?
Or approval?
Or, and so on.
Yeah, we're checking that.
Coming to school, if you're a volunteer student. So, if this is, in somebody going through the school, we have now are looking at chaperones who are, you know, sort of volunteers, and how would that work?
We would follow the policy.
Right, but what level would they be?
I'd have to look, obviously, I don't have it from me. I think it'd probably be a level three.
Yeah, so that would be a question I have.
Yeah, I think they'd be in the category of like unsupervised.
Unsupervised, with a student.
I think that's a level three, I just, I don't wanna put something that I don't have.
Right, but so, yeah, there's a question with chaperones, and making sure that they, you know, hit the correct level of.
Yeah, this is a.
There's a lot of questions.
Yeah, I have a lot of questions too.
So, can we table this till answers are addressed?
Yeah, so, I just clarify, if it, if it is tabled. Right, so we would have to say that it would be offered this year, and it would be something that we look to offer next year.
Well, it says it's offered every other year, so the first trip?
Would be this year, because in timeframe.
Is it possible to offer it maybe twenty twenty-six?
That's something that would have to be the year later.
So it would, it would start being offered twenty twenty-six, maybe even, or so far?
Correct. Because time is time-sensitive now, so, yeah, like, it would be a rush. Like, we'd do it, and then the kid would have to get out there and like really, yeah, I mean, we talked about a break, and it's really tight. So if we were to wait and get more questions than answering, then can we answer a little more?
Yeah, and give kids more of the time to be motivated.
We'd have to wait.
To take it. Sorry, Michelle, another consideration with the, for kids whose, students whose parents cannot afford to send them on a trip. If we're gonna do this, I would like for us to consider like a scholarship path, or some kind of, you know, matching program against.
Sliding scale.
Donated funds, or so, something like that, so that students who have an interest and want to participate but can't afford it,
Sensibility is.
Have the opportunity, yeah.
There.
For students who would benefit.
For students who would benefit, would not have the opportunity.
Yep, I actually know of a district who's looking at setting up a trust, or find using a, a major donor who graduated from their district.
Yeah.
Who could possibly do something like that, I don't think.
Sounds like not too.
We would be, yeah.
Business for good, all conscious.
This.
Go towards this.
The company, I think, much, much larger.
Okay, well, yeah. Can we table this? Um, is that okay? I think it's okay, yeah, I, you know, bring it back to us when it's, that some of those questions are answered.
How does that, do we have to vote to table it, or is it?
Um, is there anything in front?
Yeah, you, you get in front of you to vote.
Um, I think we can, I think we can just not vote, right?
Yeah, Robert's rules.
Yeah, because I don't, I don't think we're tabled. I don't think we're voting against it.
No, I didn't know how, how Bush knew that.
Can we, let's vote, shall we vote, make a motion to, to vote to table it? Does everyone want to, that?
Do we need to, yeah.
Do we need to officially table it?
I don't think so, I think, I don't have my Robert's rules, words book in front of me, but I don't believe so.
Alright.
If we can.
Players on the table, anybody?
No, I, I think we just pass.
Alright. Yeah, then, what's, I, I don't think we're rushing to this.
Mm-hmm.
Side votes is a district on the road, just in the national trip. Okay, um, now let's go back in time to old business, um, the audit committee.
Can we do the, in the, at the meeting? Yeah. If we've overturned the audit, um, then I expect we'll be in the meeting.
Alright. Um, with that, um, thank you very much, and the curriculum committee.
Hey, we had our first meeting of the year. Um, the first thing that was presented was the law of language department was there, and they did present this proposal, um, for the trip. I just heard some about it. Um, the next thing that we covered was any coursework, um, professional development that happened over the summer. Uh, one nice thing that happened over the summer was the tutoring program, um, their fusing was available, so more students actually got to attend than maybe with otherwise. Um, we had fourteen special ed students here for six weeks, to have out today. Um, for professional development for staff, there was, um, a meeting to discuss a transition program for eighth grade to ninth grade. And another one was professional development on grading, make sure for opportunity and equity. Um, the big conversation we had was on regionalization, um, which is not the same as merging. Um, so regionalization is just, uh, sort of a plan that the Blue Ribbon Commission would like to move forward for districts to kind of share resources, so that way, um, it could increase opportunities to students. Essentially looking at what, what do districts have to offer, and then what do districts need, that we can kind of match up needs. Um, we discussed media literacy, um, which is a big topic right now. Currently, NICEF is working with Department of Homeland Security to develop a standard uniform toolkit, so every school is kind of doing the same thing. Um, we looked at internships, because that's something that has come up, how students can complete internships. Um, and it gets a little tricky if we're doing it over the summer, because is it tied to the school, is it something our department of labor needs to be involved, so we talked about some of that. Um, and then the last thing we discussed was the flex lunchtime. Yeah, yes. Uh, so currently, grades six and grades nine through twelve all have a full lunch period. Um, grades seven and eight, it works a little bit differently. For seventh graders, they go to flex, which they have a couple of different options of lunch during flex. And then they have twenty-one minutes for their lunch. Um, eighth graders, they have a twenty-minute lunch, and then they move into flex time. Um, flex time, they could use to meet with the teacher, if there's something they need to catch up on, if they need extra help. Um, or, um, very nicely this year, they have the opportunity to maybe go outside, when they're dependent, so that's the, the big plus.
They finish their lunch, because I think, I think C D C recommends thirty, twenty, thirty or twenty minutes seated at the table time, which is lunch. So if lunch is twenty-one minutes, and you have to get to lunch, and get your lunch, and sit down, get back, and how long is your lunch? That would be a anxious, a waiting thing.
I, I have heard in my house, a lot of complaints about the twenty-minute lunch period.
I do hear that in the attorney, and if we're talking about anxious people, I would suggest not having time to sit down for a minute. If you're hoping that recess would be, whatever you want to call it, one whole yard time.
So Mrs. Olson is, um, going to come to the November meeting, again, she's brand new principal this year, she cannot make changes to the schedule coming in as a new principal. You want to understand your, your processes and everything. But she does have some suggestions and ideas that she wants to go over with the board at the curriculum committee in November. So, and we kind of talked about that, and so she is going to be coming in and talking about some options and suggestions and hearing from you all. So, if there's items and suggestions that you'd like to be brought up, that you're not part of the curriculum committee, please send them to Robin, so that way she can bring them up and have the voices of the board.
Yeah, I mean, I, I will say, I would certainly be in favor of students having more time for lunch, of course. Um, but I do know the reality is, do we have enough staff, there's only so many minutes in the day, when can students get extra help, if they need extra help, so I'm definitely looking forward to anything Rihanna can suggest.
Yeah, and when, when I just get a little kind of, like, any things that she gave, because I don't know enough about it to be dangerous. So, Rihanna's going to come in and give a little bit more update, and actually share some of her thought processes on it for November, so please.
Yes.
Any thoughts on like the C D recommend, C D C recommendations, all those things, please bring forward, so she can share. Thank you.
Recession for everyone, adults too.
Yeah.
Um, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, and so, yes.
Yeah, Frank, uh, took much of those updates already, so.
No, it was great, because you have to talk less, so, um, one thing to talk about, even for the next board, you know, student overview, you can see again, unless approved, and we're doing it.
Like, I don't, I don't remember, because sitting there, it's been a long time. Um, so we would, yeah, talk about all this great stuff that we're doing in that, and that was actually. Um, we talked a bit about field conditions, smaller seating, station plan, do we, we have a top dresser machine. So, a little.
A top dresser.
Top dresser, it, so it's spread, e- like evenly spread, it's like sand to leather fields, better, right? So you look at the, the divots and the bumps, and you can level them out. So, so that's, that's pretty cool. Um.
One of the other things we talked about was pesticides.
Yeah.
Right, yep.
You have a weed issue, um, especially on the saddle fields, we said, ah, an unwanted layout. Is that my right?
I might buy a turnip.
I don't want to say buy, the water.
There you go.
I don't know.
Well said.
I, I, I'm not a botanist, uh, or a source scientist, I.
It's okay.
Anyway.
And he gets herbicides, I think the pesticides are the best.
Well, yeah.
I don't know, pesticide covers insecticide, congeicide, herbicide, any.
Yeah, and the policies.
The state regs saying, the state regs come down to, uh, herbicide is considered a pesticide. And I think there was someone here saying that was, it was like a board decision, I think just the important component of that is, that is true. Um, per our policy and per the state regulation, the only way that a district can choose to put down a pesticide, which would, and be herbicide, would have to be a board decision. Um, you have to be able to say, yep, we want to do this, and hear what we want to do, and you have to speculate how much you want to do. Um, so that's why when they were saying it is a board decision or a board rumor, that the board would have to do it, and that's the truth, and it's actually reality aspect of it. I cannot put down the pesticide without the board saying, Frank, we approve that you use it, so. And can I say what they're talking about weed laws? Because Neil mentioned it, if you don't.
Uh, crabgrass.
Yeah, so you're saying crabgrass, and also things that the clover, when there's a ton of it, since it doesn't have thick roots.
I was getting schooled by Neil, because that was all new for me.
Um, when you put your foot down on it, it doesn't hold as well, and that causes the ability, and that's why some of the people are having those concerns, because you're not getting a good footing. And when we have over fifty percent clover on the field, you're creating an environment that you could possibly have.
Yeah, on stable turf, there's also issues with, uh, insects, apparently generally bees, where, you know, if you have students who are playing with a, a challenge, and, uh, actions, right, you have a lot of pollinators on field where people are playing, where maybe you shouldn't have this flower straining, it can become a safety issue. So both from the stability of the turf perspective, as well as the insect perspective, does start from the safety issue. I know you're giving me a look, but then if we're warned that, you know, you could have, uh, issues like that, that we have an issue like that in the future, looking at actual, um, which is a precarious position, um, so it's, it's at the point now, according to Neil, folks, it's got kind of out of control.
It, I think, I think Neil had a good plan, as somebody who's not necessarily a, a side person. But I think he talked about mowing it low, like down to nothing, because crabgrass is kind of your crabgrass product, so if you overseed, you can outcompete that. But, um, if we mowed it down to nothing, we can say we can distribute more soil, because the soil, I mean, specifically, we're talking about saddle field, so, I went to look at those, I didn't look at here.
Well, Neil's the, uh, the softball field over there, it's covered in crabgrass and stuff.
So, I think, and he applied, you know, kind of minimal required to do the job, it's not like we're going to continue to do this, and the field would be closed for two months.
Minimal what?
Minimal. For closure of the field, so nobody, exposure.
He would apply the minimal.
Or a pesticide to handle the problem.
Well, it's not going to handle the problem.
Well, if you oversee it at the same time, you could outcompete some of it.
Not if the soil conditions haven't been moderated to a point where they're beneficial for the desired plants. So if you, the herbicide is also going to hit, um, plants that are desired in other areas, it doesn't just stay in one place, it, it reaches. And it also is going to be influencing our kids to herbicides as well, so that is not something that's good, and it also affects our entire ecosystem that we are coming to.
I think it's.
It will have to be done again regularly.
We, we talked about, and I guess, maybe we should take a filter, I mean, honestly, because I don't know what else, if you look at the condition of the fields, they're not.
One of the things that Neil said too, was if we're looking at an outside consultant to come in, um, to look at that, and then make a recommendation, I do believe that Neil is going to make a recommendation as director of facilities, going forward, you consider herbicide. Um, we did want to have an outside consultant come in and give us other options to look at, so I do believe that we'll go through facilities, and then putting something to the board to look at, consider in the future. Um, I understand both components of it, but I am not a green grass person, I don't know how to do it, or, I can't grow things myself in my own house. Um, but I know there's different options, and one of the things Neil said was, if we did have a better system and a better place, but we're starting in a place where it's not. And again, I'm not a person that, you are well educated, and this more so than any of us at this table. Um, and then Neil would be the other person that we would go to, but having an outside consultant come in and talk to facilities, um, but that's what we talked about, was saying, where do we go? And, you know, this is an option for us, but let's get another person in here to have a conversation with us, so then we can have an educated conversation as a.
Clover exists when it's, when it's well in nitrogen production, usually, so if the soils are less nitrogen production, then they're less likely to thrive. As he's been mediating soils, with evidence that are appropriate, because he's been doing soil tests towards the needed, or the soil is ready, then.
I mean, I think, you know, you, you have the background, so you should take a look.
It, it, but I think it takes time, and there are seeds in any soil that are going to persist for decades and not literally centuries, so.
Especially if it's true.
Yes, so we continue that. And my, I'm curious, what is a top dresser, what type of soil would be put down, because as we decompose, the school's composting, we can be helping.
And I don't know, that would be a question, I would assume, I think generally you would level the sands for some time, I, I, that's just.
Yeah, it's probably easiest to just with.
But, uh, like, I mean, there's, there's folks who, they, their jobs are, uh, maintaining athletic fields, right, I've heard from them before, were, uh, they, they.
Schoolhouse.
Right, in schoolhouses, yeah, they put together a process on like field maintenance, and, you know, they would make narration.
Why not?
For us to, 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 to.
Yeah, because I believe in compost too, but it would take us years to, I mean, to, a field that composts, we need to manage that problem.
Yes. Unless there are castings or, or. Is there anything else, because?
I mean, we can keep going on this.
No, it's, but I think it's worth a look, because it's a different subject.
Yeah, then Rick, yeah, if you could do the same thing that you were asking before, like, some of the key points that you were talking about. Um, kind of a little, send them to Rob, so that way when we go to facilities, and then again, any other board member who's not on facilities, I would suggest, you know, it's a way that we should use these committees to the better benefit of bringing it to the committee chair, then we can talk about them at that meeting, and then kind of go over them to Neil, so that allows for us to have a further discussion. Um, that would be very helpful, and plus, a lot of things you said, I was trying to write down, I'm annoyed.
If we get a chance.
I.
Write it, yeah.
Uh, we also started having a very early conversation about our next capital project. Get around some dates that I haven't mentioned yet, I guess, maybe we'll change.
Well, we can state the dates that we gave, that Jim and I gave, that you didn't like, but yes.
I didn't, not like, I'm just, you know, earlier is always, uh, it's, it's good to have aspirational goals. Yeah, what do we say, the twenty twenty six?
Twenty twenty six.
Yeah.
December twenty twenty six.
So Jim was looking at, um, and I don't have the numbers to do, but he kind of put up some numbers, and I'm just thinking of the secondary project, so the sec, a campus project here, middle school, high school, um, to address our facilities needs, both internally and externally. Um, you know, run about estimate, again, you can't do these things right away, people are like, well, let's do it now, so they need to understand, like, we need to, first off, have enough money in capital reserves to pay for. And that means that, you know, it's roughly four to five billion dollars that we have to be able to save in order to do it, which we don't have it right now, I can't remember what Jim said. Um, and what we don't have it, and we'll probably have to create another capital reserve fund to help put money into, so something that the board's going to have to look into, uh, there. But then we look at our, our project, and that would include athletic fields, the pack, um, instructional capacity in our building, our cafeteria, so anything that we'd want to look at. Again, there would be the things that aren't so fancy, so new roofs, you know, for example, one, you know, one roof can cost anywhere between one point two to two point two million dollars, you know, the roofs. You know, if we wanted to redo our, our ceilings, you know, because they're really bad, our ceiling grids in our middle school and high, in our middle school, you know, and high school hallways are not good, it's going to be a roughly million. So you talk about air conditioning, or unit vents, like, all of those things are money that go into it, and, you know, you look at our track, our fields, everything else that goes into it. That is a large-scale project, anywhere between twenty-five to thirty million dollars, is what we were talking about. So if we're looking at a large-scale secondary project, twenty-five to thirty million dollars, within the five years of doing it, so that's our debt services, again, not as smart as Jim when it comes to this stuff. I can just do the over basics, but you, you know, balance out our debt services, uh, we look at twenty twenty-six to develop the project, that gives us a year and a half to take our time to really figure out what we'd be doing after the voters with, um, and then do the project in, at voter approval twenty twenty-six, go to the state. That takes roughly a year to get it all ready, after that point, so you're looking at breaking ground twenty twenty. So, and I know that's where Rob goes, can't be doing quicker, um.
And one very specific concern, right, is our, our track, we pay a good amount of money to bring up to, you know, buy us five years, maybe seven, and some of the dates we look at were kind of outside of where that's going to fall.
We'll be band-aiding really quickly on a lot of issues.
Mm-hmm. So, you know, understanding that this is a difficult, um, process, but, you know, or the course of the process, do you have any efficiencies pop up, just a second?
Yeah, so, we're looking, but, yeah.
Maybe it'll happen, one can, one can be, uh.
But that is the rough scale of it, and the other, and the other component of it was, it would be a taxpayer component into it, similar to what we were looking at here. Um, again, Jim, I, I believe he said anywhere between two point two and three percent would be what we'd be looking at, again. This is long, we just gave the overview, basically outlined of what it could be, like, the worst-case scenarios, so that we can work it way down from there, but just wanted to start that planning process, because as you remember, we started the planning process for the transportation element, it was twenty twenty one, so it took some time, so.
Um, we also talked about the, uh, the Spirit Rock, okay?
Spirit Rock.
Got some good conversations there, there's some logistical difficulties with the capital project coming up, we've been up a lot of, we also, yeah, something we, we wanted to bring back to the whole board for discussion, I don't know, Frank, if that's as better as an agenda, I don't like, I don't.
Yeah, let's put it on Frank's.
Next one's. It's an actual agenda, I don't have.
Like a discussion, but.
About it here formally, but, yeah, curious to see what everyone else, uh, thinks about the concept of the Spirit Rock, I don't know if everybody's, like, we touched on it, a couple. I don't know if everybody's, like, we touched on it a couple times, you know, during this segment. But maybe we can have a little presentation too, about what Spirit Rock is, what the one, what some of the goals there are, and then, you know, work and.
Tess, will you bring that down? Thank you.
Let's see, that's something that, you know, we were looking forward to have, right, like I said, the capital project throws a little bit of wrench in things, because it's been, we've done older too many times, that may be hard to do, and then, you know, where, but those are all.
Yeah, a bridge. Or a bridge. Yeah, someone could rethink that bridge.
A bridge, a bridge is creepy.
A slalom, Mr. Bridge.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's, that's all I got. We talked about the hundred thousand dollar project package.
Yeah, that's just packets, so roof access, we don't have access to the roof and the auditorium. And, you know, this is a reminder, a hundred thousand dollar project is its capital reserve, it's capital money. We get money back each year, so we already started the process, and to leave, this is the third year that we've done it, next year will be the fourth year, that we'll be, you know, working through that project.
Ladders are expensive.
Ladders are not cheap.
And that's, that's it for real?
RJ, would you like to talk about your themes and stories about?
Sure, yeah, so we had a pretty long meeting, we went about an hour. But really what we did was talk through the agenda as it existed back in June, and really dug in on what those topics are. So we meet again on Wednesday, so two days from now, and our plan is to start digging in on the items where there's already been a lot of work done on those policies, but they're new to Matt and Barbara. So we'll start to tip through those, and hopefully we'll have something ready for board vote in November. And we'll, we'll at least get through some. We'll continue to try and bring things as a package from our related policies. Who else? Oh, if anyone has any items you'd like policy to look at, just send me an email. We already have a big agenda, but we add more all the time, so it's a five day agenda. No, it's not that bad, but it's, it's.
Thank you. Again, thank you all for the committee work that's been done. Safety committee met, and that's all today. Dr. Committee met, the advisory committee met, that was done for meeting.
And the advisory, the advisory council to the school council program, we're gonna have our first meeting later this month too, so I should have an update next month.
These four areas of committee are all on YouTube when they meet, and, and one is welcome too, and you're invited to, fortunately, enjoy yourself. I'll watch the meeting. So.
Can I give a quick shout, one thing? So those are all done on the owl, I do wanna give a shout out to Lani tonight, who's trying a new system for our board, because we're trying to finalize and make it a little bit better and easier and user friendly. So, Lani, thank you for being here tonight to do this.
You need to talk into your microphones more.
I'm terrible at that. Thank you, thank you, Lani.
You're okay, you're good, some of you aren't. He's, he's okay.
Wait, I'm gonna turn it off.
Yeah, yours is loud.
That's, I just wanted to.
Thanks.
Just standing in the corner, give a shout out.
It's a work in progress.
You wanna watch it now and on YouTube.
We could do that, we could do that.
With that, we move to new business items at point one, acceptance of donations. We have two people, two groups that are offering donations to us very kindly. Stewart Shops has a grant for its mascot costume thing, I think it's not even a costume.
Can't wait to see it.
Hopefully it looks like a blackbird and a bird.
So we have, it's a blackbird, and we've put out multiple grants to multiple different places. The PTA will be generous enough to help us out if we can't make the end result, we're trying to get as much as humanly possible. I do have a couple more grants out right now that haven't come back yet, but I'm hoping that we can do it. So we're trying to get a professional grade mascot, similar to the ones you can see at colleges and different things like that. The one we have now is pretty old, smelly, it gets really, really hot, this one would have a fan in it, or, you know, the ability so we can make sure that people stay cool and comfortable and not pass out.
Couldn't we just come with bats, or just something, have that T-Rex costume?
That would be funny, right?
Changeover?
So we are looking at doing that, and we're trying to find grant funding to be able to support it, so thank you to Stewart's for helping me. And then we're also anticipating another small amount from CDPHB, but it hasn't come in yet.
And PTA for the support of the middle school faculty room, it's fantastic, generous. Are there any questions or comments about these offerings?
Don't we usually have a matching one to amend the budget, or do we need explanations of that?
I don't know.
If there's a resolution, yes.
Yeah.
We'll flex that next time. The person who helps oversight that.
Yeah, we'll spend it now.
We gotta put to where it goes.
Okay.
Thank you to both groups for those donations.
Yes.
And. That's a problem.
Okay, so we're not gonna spend on that yet?
No, and we'll put on where the budget codes go for it for next time.
Thank you. With that, does anyone wanna move?
I gotta look at that.
Second?
Second?
All in favor? All right, and a big thank you to, to the groups, Stewart's, and the PTA. Fantastic. All right, we, we have a lucky member who's offered to go virtually to the NISBA Business Meeting, which is tomorrow, correct?
Thursday.
Thursday?
Yes.
It starts at four P M.
Yes.
And it ends right before midnight. If you're lucky, so there are thirty seven resolutions?
That sounds about right, it is, it's been coming right here.
And we were gonna go through each of them right now.
Yes, thirty seven.
In, in rapid. For, for everyone to get a chance to weigh in and provide input. And Matt, you vote as you see fit, and you'll have our input if you have any questions about it. So, shall we cruise through these? All right. Just for anyone who doesn't know, NISBA is the New York State Civil War Association, and they have all these resolutions that everyone has submitted all over. And they have a bunch that they've suggested are recommended to pass, and then they have some that they don't really recommend to pass. And they start with the recommended ones. So I think this is accessible to the whole world, if you Google NISBA's first resolutions trying to be forward. We're not gonna read them aloud, because we wanna be careful. So, do we wanna just go through, and if anyone has, we'll go like one, two, three, four, just count them down, if anyone has one that they're like prefer to vote against or something, otherwise, we assume he's gonna vote for it.
Can we just go through, if anybody objects?
Yeah, just one instead of two.
That swimming pool one was on there.
Yeah, and I, and I, yeah, I made a note of that in terms of how it is, that, you know, we relate our collective vision to, to the school districts that sponsored that. But, I mean, I'm happy to do it however, which way you want, but, you know, we can, we've had an opportunity to look through all these, you know, so let me know if there are any, that you have any particular feelings or objections to, or, or conversely, you know, anybody you'd like their support for. But certainly it's up to you, if anyone feels a bit.
Just, just to go through, one, if there's any one or two, like I just can, like, options are one. Oh, thank you.
You are.
Resolution one, resolution two, resolution three, resolution four. That one's on eliminating the limit on Bosie's district superintendent compensation, I'm kind of on the fence on that one. Five. Six is increasing the speedable salary cap for Bosie's career technical. Seven.
Sorry, I'm.
Oh, did I catch that?
Yeah.
Seven is legislation to amend the current service system to modernize exam materials and frequent, increase the frequency of exam administration. Eight is legislation provides sufficient funding through business aid for construction of new schools that would replace one or more outdated and antiquated schools. I don't know. That's on that one. Nine is asking for more timely decisions on school aid from the governor's budget. I strongly support.
It's a hard one.
Wish, wishing, if wishing made it so. Ten is supporting hybrid electric buses as an alternative.
Now, just so that you know, I, what I did was, when I reviewed these, I picked out those that were recommended for passage, that I have some, some thoughts on. So ten would be the first one on the list that I picked up on, just wanted to get people's thoughts. You know, that one wants, you know, what they wanna do is, they want to expand the mandate to allow the purchase of hybrid buses in order to satisfy the fleet requirement. You know, I guess maybe one might think that that could create an exception that's gonna swallow the rule, but I don't know, is that something that anyone has thoughts on?
Currently, there are challenges, we've had some presentation, we've had some presentations on it, and currently, in cold weather, an older battery would have a root length that would not serve a lot of our groups. And in our relatively small geographic district, other districts will be severely hampered by having to have an all-electric fleet with current electric, all-electric vehicle capabilities. I am very much for the use of lower carbon emissions, there's also a question of lifecycle analysis of this, but pushing that aside, assuming it's, assuming, which is a thought. It, this might bridge some districts which have long, long bus routes and need to go greater distances than an electric bus would allow it to do at colder temperatures especially.
So with the bridging the gap point, I wonder if there's, if there's an opportunity for, for questions or for, I mean, one question that I have is whether or not there's a sun, whether that they'd be pushing for this, this carve out with a sunset on it. You know, because my, because my concern is, as I said, is the hybrid then becoming the exception rule, everyone's just gonna bomb by hybrid, forget about the full electric, and essentially negate, negate the mandate. But instead, you know, would this be, would this be an idea where they would allow the purchase of hybrids for at least a period of time, as you say, bridge that gap? I don't.
Yeah, other bus routes that are, you know, exceeding, or for some percentage of them. And then the question is also, what is the availability of a hybrid bus? I don't, you know, are there, are there hybrid buses?
I ask you, Frank.
Hey, look, proposal, I was having a conversation this morning about judging out for next year for electric buses, so I don't know about hybrid, because I'm just, I spent an hour this morning working on this, like, electric buses, so.
Best of luck.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I don't, you feel, does anyone have any strong feeling either?
I don't know, I mean, I personally support it, I guess, like, as a more of a stopgap, I mean, not, this is something, I've, I've been driving fully electric cars since twenty eighteen, right? I love the concept, it's fantastic, but there are a lot of problems right now with like the current battery technology platform on buses. I don't understand why, like, the charging is more limited, and the battery pack size is more limited, and they're not adopting, like, maybe we else has adopted one, they're in charging standard, for example, now, there's a little. So, like, as it is, it feels like a couple more years to mature, we may get better electric buses, but we don't have the problems of like a two-hour field trip being able to charge in time.
Well, this one was proposed by Antioch, which, which.
By who?
Antioch, Central School District, and, and they're, you know, during, they already had a session where there's an opportunity to ask questions, and really the rationale behind it was that they're a school district which can't do a complete route on a full truck. So that, that's really what normally I'd see them, but, okay.
And they might have time to recharge it before the next route, either, if they strength their, so, yeah, you have to have two sets of buses.
It'd be nicer to see a time cap, whatever provision on this.
Right, but you don't want the, you want the perfect, you know.
Yeah, I understand the need for it, that's all.
Eleven was getting building comments within six months. Frank, did you hear that? Twelve is funding to technology for smartphone regulation policies, I, I don't support that.
Is this, does this mean give school money for yonder pouches, or does this mean?
Yeah, put in a box.
Or does this mean like network technology, harmful content?
I, I think it means, put it in a box, it means yonder pouches. There's, that's just stupid money, you know, literally go through it, it's easy money. Yeah, it's just too much. And so this one came from Gilderland, and it's to support opportunities for EPK for students who are at kind of a disadvantage, or are English language learners in less, if there's a limited amount.
On that one, we've talked about this one before, because I think we were asked to sign on.
Yeah.
My concern with this, and I, I completely support the rationale, my concern is the pot is limited, and if you end up taking all the money out of districts where people can potentially support EPK on their own, or some kind of pre-K on their own. District like, like ours may end up with no funding for EPK.
This, this doesn't do that, this says like if we had, or if any district had thirty kids applying and they had twenty spots, then they could, instead of lottery system.
I get, I get that, but I'm saying, the, the, what happens when that takes place is people then say, well, the next logical step is to pull funding from the districts that don't need it, and give it to the districts that do, because their population cannot afford private pre-K. So I think it, I, I would be neutral on this one, because I, I don't think, I think over the long run, it hurts us. I, I, I completely understand the rationale and I'm supportive of it, I just think the pot is limited, and it's gotta get split up somehow, and we're gonna lose.
Good answer. Um, good to go, fourteen is direct funding for students who enter Bosie's CTE program for graduate licensure certification, and that's interesting.
Interesting.
Fifteen, here we come to swimming. We have discussed this one. For a bit?
Yep.
Matt?
I, I'll, I'll, or your prior, prior position, the language wasn't changing, so it seems overly prescribed.
Sixteen, do you know, definitely decline the transportation services?
I, I, I don't, I don't support that, and that, in addition, this is being recommended by their resolutions committee, whether it's opposed by their DEI committee, which we saw over there. All their proposals now, essentially what this says is, a lot of parents, as we discussed a little bit already today, a lot of parents will already drive their kids to and from school, so therefore allow those parents to affirmatively opt out of, of the transportation requirements of the school. So therefore allow those parents to affirmatively opt out of, of the transportation requirements of the school. And then, as I understand the proposal, reallocate the transportation resources where they're needed. Um, I, I think that's wrong, there's some problems that are well intentioned, so I'm, I'm inclined to not support that.
Uh, seventeen is reviewing and advising long acronym exam. Um. Eighteen, refrain from putting it into computer system, make that exam others into computer system until it's field tested that the computer system works. Uh, and then nineteen is they've hopefully funded study of foundation aid from the, the transparency, I think.
I think it's already happened, but it is.
Uh, and nineteen, yep, twenty, um, additional state or federal funding for English language for student education to reflect the costs associated with it. Uh, twenty-one is giving more money per student for UPK, which has been the same amount for the years that we've been getting it. And I don't know of anything that has stayed the same amount for that long.
Can I add something to that one?
Absolutely.
So last year, the state allowed for, um, the ability for schools to apply for a grant to increase the rates to the rates that are here, so a thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars based on a pew purple, uh, for a certified teacher. Um, some school districts were able to get that, some school districts were not. So it's not, it's not equitable across the board. So again, I believe, what I've heard was that grant is gonna come out again, then it's still a base by base, and how much money you have, and the students you have, and a lot, everything else, you know, everything that would go into it. Um, I believe what this one does, it basically says, no, stop it, don't make everybody have the grant, just up the prices so we can get our UPK programs. Um, so I just wanted to kind of clarify, there is that money out there, it's just not uniformly added to everybody across the district.
And there's awareness there for that, there's need for more. Okay, um, oppose, the proposed amendments related to mixed competition, extra class activities.
That regulation has been withdrawn, uh, maybe moved along from the regions, however, as explained during the, the, I guess, certification section that we had already witnessed, but according to NISBA council, uh, deputy, deputy director, they are keeping it on the agenda in the event that the, the proposal is resurrected so that they have some kind of guidance, sort of organization that you work on. Personally, um, I, I, my, my reading of it and my understanding of the regulation, my inclination is to oppose the opposition of, of the regulation. Um, so, uh, unless anyone has anything at this point to add, we vote against, uh, that, that resolution.
Sounds good to me, I agree, thank you. Uh, resolution twenty-three, uh, opposing efforts to establish additional school closure holidays without adjustments to the school calendar. Uh, it seems like a good school calendar needs to be adjusted because we're celebrating Fourth of July and schools, so I, I oppose this personally. But I also think we continue to look closely at the calendar this, you know, June is not meant to be in school, especially with the temperatures that are occurring and the mental capacity of students. Um. Twenty-four, field testing.
I didn't understand this one, please, field testing? We did chosen.
So you give the test or the questions to students, um, but it doesn't count. So you have to give out the exam, so then they can basically rate and say how well the students did on the questions itself.
The faith test?
Well, sometimes those questions that are field tested, you will have seen them a year or two down the road in a test. Um, but it's, it's basically testing the tests on students and then checking.
There are many teams and they don't get paid for it, so it's, it's like more standardized testing, basically, to know and accept to support the company that's getting paid a ton of money to do the testing. I support this.
I support this.
Wholeheartedly, like, I will join the call, I can't believe it.
I'm sorry, can you say that louder?
Um.
You'll join the call?
Uh, enjoy the call, please support it. Twenty-four, thumbs up. Twenty-five.
Matt, can I ask why the DEI committee opposed that one?
I don't know, did they provide, sometimes they provide rationale.
They didn't say anything there.
I, I don't know, I can, I can imply.
Yeah, it just said, it's interesting, I'm sorry.
No.
And I should, to your conversation, but that's just, I'm surprised that they opposed that for some reason.
I got my problem with twenty-five. Which brings us to the resolutions that are not recommended, which is always a good time. Um, the first one of the not recommended is number twenty-six, which supports legislation to eliminate region's testing in favor of state final exams. Um, and basically like an ELA math and a science exam. Someone who moved to New York, I still don't understand why they have exams. Just.
Yeah, uh, so you're just taking one test and replacing it with another?
Yeah, I don't understand anything about this, it's just me calling it, uh, final state final exams and the region's exam, but still, can we change that?
You'll, you'll, in a lot of these in this group, I'll, I'll just say you'll, you'll notice a few graphic similarities to where they're coming from.
Yeah. Um, a cap on budget increases at Bosie's is number twenty-seven. Well, why not?
So, I'm opposed to this one. I mean, what happens with the ones that are not recommended, are they still voted on?
They get still voted on, and, and, but sometimes people start hanging up, and they get two hundred people holding on the call, then the call. So.
They just hang up and do all the talking.
If you're done, then you're just, like, tapping out, and if not people tap out, there isn't warm in the hands. But, yeah.
Do, do the not supported ones have any chances of, you know?
Yes, they have, it's very exciting, and people will get, get on the call and endorse them, and then people will, will make a motion to exceed, extend the time to discuss them. And then people vote on that, and then they extend the time to discuss them, and people get, it's, it's as much fun as you can.
You sound really excited.
Enjoy.
I'm a little guilty of hating this for now.
No, no, I will, I will be very busy on Thursday evening or tomorrow, whichever one it is.
Into Friday morning.
Yes, enjoy. Um, foundation for God to be voted on, not through regulatory actions. Um. Oh, fascinating, number twenty-nine, repealing the law that removed the religious slash moral exemption to immunization.
Yep, opposed to.
Feel free to oppose that one. Um, advocating for local control of education administration to the county executive for school work is appropriate.
Opposed.
Uh, opposing legislation, number thirty-one, um, regulation mandating comprehensive K-12 gender and sexuality in education.
Opposed to.
Twelve, thirty-two, opposing legislation that would allow biological males to participate in female athletics. Thirty-three, mandating regulations from Blue Ribbon Commission, opposing any regulation, legislation that mandates recommendations from Blue Ribbon Commission, including mandating the culturally responsive sustaining education program. Surprisingly, DEI opposed that. Uh, thirty-four, urging NISA to rescind unnecessary early dismissal mandate.
If only that could be done, and then, right, we don't have to do it?
Um, thirty-five, granting bail in cases of violent threats against school districts or staff and/or staff and/or students. Oh, to require bail, sorry, excuse me. Um, it's granting a judge's the ability to require bail. Thirty-six, state law that requires school boards to conduct at least three member trainings during each school year on topics determined by the board and other relevant stakeholders.
Opposed.
Um. I'm actually gonna say that this one, I hope they still are on the call, for number thirty-seven, advocating for thirty to forty minutes per day of recess time officially recognized an alternate form of instruction time in elementary schools counted toward mandated minutes. And schools can then out, a adequate time for recess each day to ensure the social and emotional well-being and whole child development of their students.
I, I also have a note on that one that I actually favor a little bit of that.
Yep.
And I, I, I didn't find that NISBA's rationale for its non-recommendation tended to be circular. Uh, which was, well, you don't wanna take time away from instructional time, well, did you read the proposal? The proposal is to allow that thirty-five, four, we included as instruction time, at least that's my understanding of the other, but I, I thought their opposition was a bit circular.
Uh, DEI committee was unable to reach a position for a decision, so that's thirty-seven, I, I hope you guys make it to number thirty-seven and maybe people pass. That's happening, so. I think a big round of applause to Matt for taking that on.
Yes.
Have fun, enjoy, feel free to text us all how it goes, give us live streaming, there's plenty of time. Um, all right, we had an audit report, uh, seven point four, was there anything else on that?
No.
Seven point four, moving on.
Seven point three.
Oh, that was seven point three, god. Yep, seven point three, more discussion, environmental concerns, um, ironically, the, the pesticide.
Yeah, that's not the original list, uh, uh, I don't remember this one, so here's.
No, this was just the, oh, this was, um, this was a question about the school trying to be environmentally sustainable and, and homecoming for the past few years, we've had fireworks. And when they went off, we lived a couple miles from here, and I knew they were going off because their dogs started freaking out inside the food shop. So not only do they have an environmental footprint, they are, um, pretty stressful to animals and to many people. So I'm, I'm curious as to where we stand about environmental concerns, and I know that this is a third wire, because people love fireworks, I do love fireworks. But it, it's hard to watch the storms that are hitting our country and think about what we're living in and set off. I think now that some venues switched to light shows, there are drone shows that are fantastic, and I wonder if that's a viable, I don't know, for a district. I looked into it a bit, they're more offensive fireworks, but they are not going to be as. Frank and I are.
And Neil, he's coming through.
And Neil's coming too, there's an environmental conference, uh, for schools, I think, uh, on the twenty-fourth of October, and we're in Saratoga. Saratoga, so we're into that, but without having our school district be more environmental, and this was something that kind of came up in my mind, and, and this, they kind of converged. So I just wondered, as the district, we've made decisions about things environmentally, and we're, that we wanted to think about how we show our students and the community, um, do walk, walk. But just asking yourselves that. And why do I not want to be the person who says, no more? But at the same time, I also don't want to be the person who says, well, it's a hundred degrees and it's May third.
I have a couple of questions, I can share how I feel, um, these, these are fireworks that are, that are, the school's resources are used for?
No, no.
No.
So let me, I mean, it all started. Let me give the history a little bit, if that's all right. Yeah. That's funny. Anyway, flashback, sorry, uh, no, okay, um, so in twenty twenty, when we had, when COVID happened, they canceled the fireworks for the memorial for.
Memorial Day.
Thank you, it was for Memorial Day, it was on a new trip, uh, for Memorial Day, and when we did the outside graduation, they were generous enough to donate those to the students for that time. So they were booster funded or donated into the district at that point in time. Um, that occurred again, and then at homecoming, the booster club, or soccer, I believe, then gets donations, and then they have now donated the fireworks as part of that. So it comes from booster clubs or donations from outside the district, no general funds are coming from it. Uh, the district has allowed fireworks to happen on campus, and I also want to clarify, um, we will also allow them to happen on Memorial Day. Uh, so even though the district doesn't do it, but we do condone the use of fireworks on campus, um, and that's been a longstanding tradition, I believe, right? I mean, I can remember twenty years, about a decade.
Yep, and then the Nichols Fund goes up with fireworks.
But, so just with that, if you're saying no fireworks on campus, I do think you would also have to consider the larger extent of that as well, just brainstorm that one.
Yeah.
But it is otherwise possible to kind of, I think, this is, I say, you're legitimately dividing between school functions and non-school functions.
We could do that.
You know, uh, I think it's a discussion worth, worth having, I think that, I guess, that you, that. Things, you know, uh, change is not easy, and to be the first, or even the second or the third, it is just not, is particularly not easy, but change needs to start somewhere. And, um, I think it's a discussion, you know, worth, worth having, whether we have that entire discussion here today or we carry it forward, which I think is probably more realistic. But, uh, certainly, I think it's a discussion worth having, we're all, we're all elected to be here on the floor, and it gives us time to hear from, from people and what they have to say about that. Um, but I, I welcome the discussion, most certainly, because I recognize that not only the, the scientific environmental impact that fireworks have, but, um, I guess I'd call it the non-scientific environmental impact of, of animals and humans and, and PTSD, uh, uh, impacts, which, which is, is, is certainly impacting matter. Um, so I think it's a, I think it's an important discussion to have, and I welcome that you would like some of that, probably done.
Yeah, I would be interested in hearing what comes out of your confidence, but I think, you know, I'd say, if you know better, you do better, and I love fireworks too, but I've also been maybe more aware in recent years of, you know, the animal significance and the PTSD. And those are real issues for people, and so, you know, I think we need to dive in and see what we can do to be a role model and a change agent. And, yeah, there's gonna be pushback, you know, it's, Memorial Day tradition has always been, you know, for thirty-eight years, and it's, I think it predated that, so, um, let's, then see if willing, you know, if people are willing to entertain new information and, and make changes based on that. So.
I've also been to some really fantastic drone shows, and I would love to see a student designed and hosted drone show, I think that would be awesome. Um, I don't know how feasible that is, I'm sure it's expensive, but I think that would be really cool. Um, but, you know, the pesticide topic and then this topic, you know, similar to what we did when we were considering, uh, exemptions, strikes me as a topic where I'd be good to hear from Andy. And, um, so maybe we need to host a forum before board meeting, um, to address environmental concerns and not just, um, the two things I mentioned, but other concerns that people have that I'm involved about.
I just wanna, I Googled quick drone show near me.
Okay.
Well, I'm not gonna say that, I'm gonna say that RPI though, celebrated their two hundred years with the drone show, fireworks, so September twenty- So September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, they they did a vice intending a drone show. Yes, expensive, but I just wanted to say they have been lovely and have.
Again, maybe you should talk to our. Again, since we talked about forums being limited in participation, maybe it could be a community survey of some kind or, you know, where people could just.
Well, what we've what we've done is, yeah, sorry.
No, sorry.
But, um, what we have done is we've kind of put it out there to ask people to comment and, um, send us an email if they are not able. We haven't really got a lot of good response in that way, but maybe it will. I I don't, I don't.
Yeah.
Survey responses are are also challenging. We frequently get a very low percentage of respondents and that gives us another just potentially distorted.
Maybe that's part of the community, through a community group.
Yeah, I don't know, we, as a way to generally. And it would be good to talk to the chemicals group as well. Um, Parker, what? Lots of not really needed or.
No, I I was just gonna say, I mean, I I agree with our team. It's probably a good idea for a, you know, forum discussion.
Great, December.
I'll put that on the list. So I I wrote down forum for environmental conversation, but, you know, talking to communication, if you look at, you know, a plan B, we get out what the board is looking to get input on. And then looking to groups to invite, I think that's gonna be an important thing, right? Not just anything from like key people into those conversations. And then partner also looking at, so like invite the chemicals group, invite the corns club, invite the PTSD, you know, just not expect people, yeah, the booster clubs, like invite them to come in, not just expect community members to come, might be another way to do it too. So.
My guess is it was. Yeah, I'm hoping.
I'm hoping it's working.
It was great. It'll be worth the price of admission.
Sure.
Um, thank you for the reception of that conversation. Uh, with that, um, are we good to move to item seven point four or we have more just? All right, the independent audit report was fantastic. Thank you, Teresa. Uh, would anyone like to?
Move it.
Second?
On second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Uh, item seven point five, refrain from charging power. Any questions or comments?
Oh, move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
With that, we move to other business and eight point one, the opportunity for the public to be heard. We invite anyone in the public to come forward to podium. We do have, um, like kind of a request that you focus on things that were discussed tonight, but, um. Maybe it's. Eight point two, opportunity for the board to be heard. Um. I thank you all for all the community work, doing the community work to do both these things, making this better district. We have another meeting on November fourth. We're we're meeting, who knows what's gonna happen and we have audit committee meeting proceeding and. But mark calendars, I think there's something happening on the end, question. I think it's a civic responsibility, so it's one to mark your calendar for it. With that, does anyone have anything they wanna say or would like to move to adjourn?
Move to adjourn?
Second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Under four hours, vote.